What happened to you? Approved the minutes of September regular meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I make commotion to approve minutes of the September meeting.
It is probably moved that we accept the minutes of the September meeting. Sec, probably moved and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Let the record reflect that it's unanimously approved. Item number two. Appointment of City Clerk. Recommendation. As you know, many years in the past, the City Clerk and the Treasurer have been one position. And we were looking through the Larson Act, and it calls for two positions. And as we studied that, it has really worked out in real, real good. And what I mean by that, we're recommending Julia Jackson Thomas. And it's worked out real well because the duties that involve the City Clerk is far less duties than that of Treasury. The vast majority of the time that is spent in that position is spent performing Treasury tasks. So that allows the appointment of City Clerk to be able to perform other tasks. In this case, Julia was the supervisor of the utility personnel. She was able to continue that task and perform the task of City Clerk. This recommendation as a Clerk came to me by our former Clerk, Roxy. It was also recommended by her formal replacement, Mr. Malky. I have observed her in the performance of this duty and many other duties. She's a very dedicated person. She takes her job very seriously. She's a prior service, prior military. Has worked in a leadership position while serving in the military. I, as Mayor of Windsboro, Holly, recommend her for the position of Clerk.
Mayor, how are we going to do that salary? How are we going to do salary? How are you going to postpone the salary? You split both positions?
I'm glad you mentioned that. With the appointment of the Treasurer and the Clerk, we were able to save eighteen thousand dollars that we were paying, you know, to the other Clerk. The Clerk is paid thirty thousand dollars a year. The Treasurer is paid thirty thousand dollars a year. With those two salaries, we know that our former Clerk was being paid fifty-one thousand dollars a year. So it is actually per person less work. And the people who are coming onto this position, it's a slight raise for them. And I will hold that salary if you follow my recommendation. I will hold that salary at thirty thousand until they have worked for six months, which will give us an opportunity to observe their daily performance, observe their work ethics, and observe their general personality as a human being. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. So we're going to replace what Mrs. Thomas is doing now, in her position now?
No. Mrs. Thomas's position that she has now, she will continue to perform that. She will continue to perform that, and she will continue to perform City Clerk. This was the recommendation of our former City Clerk, Ms. Roxy. Mr. Malky has agreed to help with the training. He has said that there's still little really work that is involved, you know, for the Clerk, that it should be no problem. He has had an opportunity to work with her, and he does recommend her.
Mr. Mayor, we recognize the recommendations that you have made, or the recommendations that you have made. We recognize those individuals that will be assisting and have also assisted in making that recommendation. But it is clear to us that there are some other avenues that we need to pursue prior to this particular recommendation being addressed. And we may need to go into executive session in order to do so.
I don't have a problem.
Then I'm asking at this time that the Council consider executive session. That's what I'm asking for, motion at this time to go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
And we might be able to discuss some items that need to be discussed prior to this recommendation being addressed.
Okay. I would try and recommend that we cover everything else and then go into executive session.
If that's the case, can we postpone this item?
And bring it up later.
And bring it up later, yes.
Item number three. I am requesting an exit audit. An audit of our money is being changed and changed in control. And I'm requesting that the books, financial books be audited as an exit audit.
So, Mayor, this is proposed mainly because our previous Clerk is going out? And we want to do this for the purposes? Are we already, what is our next audit that's already on the books that's getting ready to come up? Are we having to get ready to come up?
The annual audit is going on as we speak. The audit that I'm asking for is an exit audit. Which basically, the annual audit has an area, a certain area that they are looking for and are performing as an annual audit. And I'm asking for an exit audit that will give us a snapshot of areas of control of the financial.
Mr. Mayor, once again, I recognize what you're doing here. I have no problem with the exit audit. The Clerk or the proposed Clerk will probably be more involved in that audit. And until this recommendation that we're talking about in item number two has taken place, I think that we need to hold off until we see what the present audit is going to do and what they're going to show us, and then ask for this exit audit or allow it to take place. This is an item too that I think we need to consider. Actually consider it in the that it be postponed or be moved until we can see what the audit that's being presently done without getting it confused or having to do it because at the time, we're going to have one Clerk that's going to be trying to answer these questions for these people. And she's going to be new. So it's going to be a situation where, you know, she's going to have to kind of get her feet wet. Whoever it is that's going to be in there is going to have to get their feet wet in order to do it.
The Clerk, just clarification and probably something that you already know. But the Clerk has a very minimum unparted known involvement with the finance. Am I correct?
That's correct. It would be the Treasurer.
And that's even more so because she has been involved in the city nor in the activities of the city whatsoever. And for them to be addressing her, Mr. Malky, would be, and for her to be expected to answer would be putting a pressure on her at this particular time until she can see what the first audit shows and gives her an opportunity to study it. And then she'd be able to maybe address those that'll be doing the exit audit at that particular time. So all I'm simply doing is asking that the exit audit be, just be postponed until this audit, the audit that's being done on the city, be finished and you take a look at it. And then at that time do an exit audit. What you do within the next, what, thirty days?
Done naturally, you know, I will accept anything that the Council, you know, decide what I'd like to be considered. The fact, you know, that the longer that we go without an exit audit, the more critical an area that the contention would become.
When will the audit, the regular in-house audit be finished? When will they finish that?
They have until December 1st, December 31st, I'm sorry.
And you're going to, in other words, you would have two audits going on basically at the same time?
I have the annual audit going on and an exit audit.
I know. What I'm saying, both of them be going on, and you're going to have new people that's going to be trying to answer some of these questions?
You know, this is not a standard, you know, situation that we're in. You know, we would just give a notification that the Clerk was resigning, you know, last meeting. And actually, I think when you deduct the vacation time, today was probably, you know, her last day. But the majority of that time, you know, that between the last meeting and now, there was, the Clerk has been in a bare minimum of time.
Right. Basically, she resigned on October the 1st. Is that correct? She resigned on October the 1st?
Right, but when she calculated her vacation time, it took us all the way over to...
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
There's some discrepancy in that procedure also.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is since she resigned on October the 1st, then from October the 1st up until, say, November, I mean, December, we're going to be looking at, what, two months roughly? That we're talking about. And in that two-month period of time, that gives the in-house audit to be finished. And then there's only two months that she will have been gone. So then that would give the exit audit an opportunity to review not only the in-house audit, but also doing the audit that, you know, that they're going to be doing, the overall audit, complete audit. So you'll have, you know, you'll have a recap of everything, and you're only talking about actually ninety days. I don't think ninety days would put us too far outside of the ballpark as far as anything changing or making any type of move, you know, in that case. And in the meantime, those that have been recommended, and if they are approved or confirmed, then they'll have an opportunity to study the in-house audit and get an understanding of what's going to happen. I hate to see new people having to put this much pressure on them without them actually knowing or having any idea of what's going to, what they're about to face. And I think that that little bit of time, ninety days, would give them, once they're confirmed, after we meet in this next meeting, I think it'd give them some time to look over something that, or the audit, to get an idea of what to expect in the exit audit. And what role they will have to play in that, whether it's answering questions or just pulling files. It doesn't matter. They've got to have, they've got to know where to go or what to, you know, what to do. And so in doing so, that gives them an opportunity to gather themselves and get themselves together. So all I'm asking is that this exit audit be postponed until the in-house audit is finished, giving both the new, those that have been recommended, an opportunity to study and to get themselves together before this is unleashed on the, and on the city, too. But it's going to be quite thorough.
Like I said, you know, I'll honor any area that you say. But just for the record, I'd like it noted, you know, that I have requested an exit audit. And that the request has been put off, you know, for three months. Three months is a pretty long time when we're asking for the exit audit. And that is to protect the existing people that will be handling, you know, the funds and the personnel who will be involved, you know, with finance. And let me say this. There is, I feel very strongly, you know, that there is nothing, you know, to be found that is not just straightforward. I have that confidence. But I have a procedure, you know, to follow for the protection of the existing personnel to ensure that they are protected and that I am protected. And that's merely a procedure to look it out for the best interest of the city of Windsboro.
I understand. And I appreciate that. And I have no problem in concurring with the exit audit. It's only the fact that if, you know, once this is finished, which, once again, if it takes the ninety days, and which I think that it probably won't. But if it does take the ninety days, we're still not talking about an exuberant amount of time that will have elapsed to where if there is, for instance, a finding that needs to be addressed, that it cannot be found within ninety days. So I'm saying that by putting it off for ninety days, it does not, that would not cause them to lose sight on whatever their perspective is in doing their job. And I feel like that would give all and everybody an opportunity to have a chance of being prepared for what is about to take place. And in following, and I want you to follow the procedure. That's the reason we called for the convening of item number two. Because there are some items in item number two that does not and is not following procedure, but we want to look at procedure before we go into the recommendation of those individuals. And we'll discuss that at the time if we have the, you know, the meeting after this.
Okay, but I'm going to make this last point and then I'm going to move on. The exit audit was recommended by our financial advisor, Mr. David Rigdon. It's a recommendation that he felt very strongly. And he would recommend it regardless of who, what municipality, or what person, you know, was handling it. It's not a personal thing. It's just a procedure that needs to be done for the protection of the city of Windsboro. Okay. Item number four. My mind.
David, I'm sorry. I ran out of my office in a hurry this afternoon and left my report sitting on my desk, so I'm going to have to...
Shame on you.
I know. I want you to remember, but if any of y'all have any questions or anything, just please call me up with me after the meeting. And if y'all want a copy of the report, I can email that to y'all. Really, the only three projects that we have to talk about tonight are the three street jobs. We talked about the industrial park last month. It was nearing completion. They have completed that project. It's substantially complete. It's within the forty-five day lien free period now. Also, the CDBG project, we had talked about that. That was substantially completed last month. It is still within the forty-five day lien free period. There were a couple of punch lists I was left on the CDBG. There's also a few that need to be addressed on the industrial park as well. The 2011 street improvements project, they'll be back in. I know they moved in some equipment Friday, and they were doing some minor work today. They'll start actually mixing in salt, cement, and reconstructing streets and doing patching for the rest of the week. And then hopefully, we'll get them in back in next week to do some asphalt work. But that's where we're at for the three street projects. Those are really the three that we needed to talk about tonight and update y'all the status for. Y'all have any questions about any of those or anything else that we've been working on?
One, one question. How do we stand with the West Side Park area and the Black Surfing?
The West Side Parks?
Area.
Area, yes, sir. That is part of this project. Like I said, they should be doing the reconstruction this week.
Oh, they're talking about it.
Yes, that's the plan. I didn't know if they, is that one of the ones they pulverized, Mr. Skipper?
No, they've done it there.
Okay, okay. Well, that should be done whenever they come back in with the asphalt. Hopefully next week, possibly the week after next.
Okay.
And then we talked about the striping on this street, and that will be done once they finish up with the asphalt.
Alright. Thank you, David. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call firefighter Adrian Caston Baldwin. Fireman Caston, you have been selected as Employee of the Month for the city of Windsboro. And your trophy read, Mayor's Award of Excellence, presented to Adrian Caston, Employee of the Month, September 2012, for Fire Department, City of Windsboro. Thank you very much on behalf of the city of Windsboro. Thank you. Mr. Robert Ignat. This is a certificate of completion. A premier department administrative and frontman of becoming a permanent technician. Hail an obelusus awarded to Robert E. Ignat, presented by Tri-State Consulting, Texas and Louisiana. Signed by Frank M. Morris. Thank you for your service to the city of Windsboro. You mean, officers report.
Thank you, Mayor. In the absence of Russell Brand, I am Kim Kimrow, and I am a volunteer for the city of Windsboro and for the dogs and cats for two years now. And I'm honored to give the report tonight. Does everyone have a copy? Our report is as of the 10th of the month. Our report is as of the 10th of every month. We've taken in thirteen new dogs. We had eighteen in the pens as of the end of last month. So we've handled a total of thirty-one dogs in the pens. We've had six adopted, eight claimed, four fostered, one taken to Monroe, and twelve dogs in the pens as of October 10th. You'll notice this is, I do have some names on the report. These are the dogs' names. As a result of our requests on our Facebook page, you know that we developed the Facebook page to get the word out to try to help reunite people with their lost pets. And the people there would much prefer that the dogs be referred to as a name rather than a number. And that's where this has come from. On the back of the page, of the dog page, is listed the details of what happened to each animal. The dogs and the cats are listed on the back. And you can see which ones were adopted, claimed, and fostered, dogs and cats. This is just a summary report. We do have books. If you guys, if anybody would like to look at all of the detail, these are all of the spay and neuter certificates that have been issued for the city. And these are all of the contracts that have been issued for 2012. All the foster, adoption, every contract that's been issued for these years in this book. And then this is our veterinary book. We do try to keep the basic veterinary care done as far as worm and the dogs. And, you know, if we see anybody who's obviously sick and doesn't need veterinary care, we can do the basics. And then we do have pictures as well of every single dog that's been through the pens since we had a camera and have documented every one of those. So at any time, that information is available to anyone on a request. But at any rate, back to the summary report. The second page is on the cats. We had six cats in the pens as of the end of last report, and we were blessed with ten cats this month. We generally get one cat every month or so. And this month, we found ten cats. So we had a total of sixteen cats handled. Ava fostered, and eight still in the pens. I wanted to point out that this is a bit of good exposure for the city. We have on our Facebook page, eight hundred and one likes on our page now. So every time we post some information about the city dogs in our program, eight hundred people see that on their Facebook page. Then when the pictures are shared, all of those friends with whom they share view it as well. So it really has the opportunity to spread like wildfire, which has contributed to the success of rehoming the dogs or reuniting them with their owners. You can see several of them were claimed. We had eight dogs claimed this month, which is far and above more than normal. So we're proud of that. Another thing that we've come up with, I'm always open to, Russell and I are trying to find ways to find them good homes, preferably to get them back where they belong. But one thing that we've recently come up with, I have a picture frame. If you'll forgive me, I'll run back there and turn that frame around. I just didn't want to distract the whole meeting with dog pictures. But I purchased this frame at Walmart for forty dollars and decided I can't do one of those for all the businesses in town who have said that we can put them in there. So I launched a Facebook campaign to ask, request, if anyone has one that you're not using, you know you have one, but you don't use it, you don't even know where it is, if you could donate it, several businesses in town, of course, Kuiper Hardware wants one in their own business. My brother would say no, but we would have one in... My brother wouldn't say no, but we would have one in Kuiper Hardware, in Big John's, at Ronnie's Exxon, at some of the local veterinary offices. And we'll ask for more places when we get more frames. But this is my latest attempt to try to get the word out there of the dogs that we do have in the pens. Because of these efforts, only two dogs since December 9th of 2011, only two dogs have been put to sleep, and both of those dogs were aggressive. I've been told today that we did catch one of the two dogs that caused a fighting problem in the city. So we don't know what will happen with...